Okay, good afternoon, good, good early evening to everyone. This is a special Fairfax Town Council meeting on Wednesday, April 29th at 5:00 PM. We're gonna do a roll call.
Uh, yes. Councilmember Blash, I'll start with you.
Here.
And I will note for the record that Councilmember Blash is participating via Zoom. And did you, um, you're using which exception?
Um, illness.
Illness, thank you. Councilmember Hellman, I'm here. Vice Mayor Kohler, here. Mayor Cutrone.
Present.
And for the record, Councilmember Ackerman is absent.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we will do the pledge of allegiance. Everyone can rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, can I get approval of the agenda for this evening?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion Kohler, second. Hellman, can I get a roll call vote?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Blash?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Hellman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kohler?
Yes.
And Mayor Cutrone?
Yes, all eyes. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, I will read the land acknowledgement real quick. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. Meeting protocol, uh, mayor shall maintain order at the meeting. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. And please turn off any cellular devices or put them on silent mode at this time. We plan to conclude this meeting before 10 o'clock, so we won't be utilizing the 10 o'clock rule or any of the other rules this evening. And we only have one regular agenda item this evening, and it's going to be kind of broken out into a couple parts here. Uh, so Tom Manager Abrams, would you be willing to walk us through what we're gonna do tonight?
Yes, indeed. Thank you. So first and foremost, I want to introduce our consultants for the Housing Element, um, project. And Andrew Hill is here from the firm, Diet and Batia. Um, and he will be doing a presentation, actually two presentations later today. Um, and the first part is to really go through some of the materials and, um, allow people in the room to look at the materials. And then they will also be displayed on the screen, um, for those at home, um, using Zoom. And then, um, you can invite the consultant to come and, and give the presentation on the Housing Element. We'll, um, of course, have, uh, questions and comments from the council and, uh, invite public comment. And then, um, do that same process again for the, um, NOP and scoping.
Great.
Just for the public, what NOP is?
Notice of preparation.
Thank you.
And we had done something Zoom-only earlier in our Housing Element process related to the NOP. And this is sort of a addendum to that. Is that right?
Yes, this is a revised, um, um, NOP. And it is, um, because we did name the sites and most of the sites are the same, but we actually added some sites. And so wanted to just be very clear on what was being studied in the sequel process.
Okay, great. Thank you. The, my understanding is the first 15, 20 minutes plus is people looking at the posters we have up in the room. Uh, the clerk will also add those, um, on the screen and sort of shift through those posters so people online can see them. And they're also on the town website for the agenda item or on the, the packet for this meeting. That's right? Okay, great. Uh, Mr. Hill, should we, anything else you want to add before we have people check out the posters? Okay, so we'll circulate for at least, you know, 15 minutes, and then we'll check and see how people are feeling and come back to council at that point.
Thank you.
Okay. For folks on Zoom who are joining a little late, we are just having, uh, sort of walkabout right now where folks are taking a look at the presentation of the, um, printouts related to the Housing Element and the EIR, Environmental Impact Report. So just giving some color commentary here, just some updates for folks who are on Zoom. People are still taking a look and, um, you can see on your screen some of the same posters that are up for members of the public in person. Uh, you can also go to the town website, townoffairfax.org, um, to find the housing, all of the Housing Element documents to provide comment this evening. And we'll get back, I'm just talking to folks on Zoom. Yeah, so a couple more minutes and then we'll get started. Okay. We're gonna get started here. If folks in the room could please take their seat. All right. Glad to see lots of conversation happening in the room. I hope folks online were able to take a look at some of those slides, um, and check out some of the other resources on the Housing Element page on the town website. Uh, Mr. Hill, uh, do you have a, this is in two sections. There's a presentation for the first, and then public comment, and then for the second. Is that correct? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, if I, if I may interrupt, um, so, um, the complete documents for the Housing Element are on our website. They're available, and there is a link on our, um, staff report today, and that takes you to the page. And then you need to click through to the document, so I just want to make sure people are aware of that. And if anyone is in need of a, a paper copy, um, they could send an email to the housing@townoffairfax.org email, and we can leave a copy at the front desk. Thank you.
Okay. Great, thank you. Yes, lots of pages. Um, so thanks for saving some trees, uh, by not printing all those out. But yes, okay, are we ready for the first presentation?
Yep, go, let's go ahead. Um, yes. Yep, that's it. Yep, there it is. And you can just go to the next slide. Thank you. Well, good evening, councilmembers and members of the public. Since we last briefed the council in November, a significant amount of work on the Housing Element has been completed. And I want to thank, uh, town staff and the Housing Element Subcommittee for really working hand and glove with us over the past few months, um, to prepare the draft Housing Element for release. In my, uh, presentation tonight, um, I wanted to provide a recap of our process and the steps taken in the run-up to release of the public review draft. I also wanted to provide some background information on, um, the, uh, the required contents of the Housing Element, um, to introduce some of the key content of the draft and particularly focus on the sites inventory and the action plan. And then finally, I'll touch on next steps in the process. So the town began work on the project back in 2021, conducting, uh, some community outreach and background analysis. Uh, my firm, Diet and Batia, was brought in, uh, late last year, and we focused on finalizing the background reports, um, including a housing needs assessment, uh, constraints analysis, and a fair housing assessment. Uh, the housing sites inventory is really, uh, a linchpin of the plan, and so that was a major focus of our work. Um, it involved vetting and revising, uh, the previously developed inventory to ensure that the sites included meet the established eligibility criteria, and the capacity projections are, um, adequately underpinned, uh, with analysis and justification. Uh, one thing that became apparent to us, uh, when we started is that, um, very few sites in Fairfax actually meet the established eligibility criteria for lower-income sites. Um, and those, those criteria are established in state law. That's primarily because of, um, the smaller size of parcels, particularly in the downtown and the town center area, but predominantly because of the extent of environmental, um, cons, uh, natural, uh, hazard risk areas in Fairfax. And you can see on the map on the screen, um, that large areas in the central portion of Fairfax are subject to flooding. Uh, large areas are also subject to liquefaction risk. Um, there's also a high wildfire risk virtually throughout the community. Um, and so that means that there are very few sites that meet the established criteria for lower-income sites. And so, uh, early on in the process, in December, uh, we held a consultation with the California Department of Community, um, Housing and Community Development to get, get their take on how to approach this, um, particular, uh, issue, um, that's, that's evident here in, in Fairfax. And HCD staff advised us, um, that we would need to do additional analysis and outreach to property owners, um, in order to demonstrate the viability of non-vacant sites for redevelopment with housing, um, during the planning period. Um, and so accordingly, starting in January, um, and through even into March, um, staff and the consultant team organized a series of property owner forums, um, that were held over Zoom. And the purpose of these forums was really to confirm interest, uh, from property owners in redevelopment with housing, to understand from their perspective, the specific challenges that, uh, that, that they face, and to identify strategies that the town can implement to help, um, them with the, with development feasibility. Um, and the inventory was refined with input, um, from these property owners, and the action plan was built out based on, uh, the, the findings of those discussions. Additionally, we met with the Housing Element Subcommittee four times between December and March, um, to vet and define content of the draft Housing Element, including the sites inventory, uh, implementing programs, and the background analysis. And then at the end of March, March 31st, in fact, the public review draft housing was released. And we're now right in the middle of the state required 30 day comment period on the draft. So let me provide a little background context on the legal requirements and the content of the housing element, particularly for for community members who may be here in the audience or watching at home. So the housing element is one of eight state mandated elements of the general plan, that is chapters of the general plan along with land use and circulation, conservation, open space, safety, noise, and environmental justice. It's essentially the town's plan for addressing local housing needs. By law, it must be updated once every eight years to plan for the coming eight year cycle. Unlike other elements of the general plan, though, the housing element is subject to a variety of different state statutory requirements. And so it's often published under separate cover from the rest of the general plan. But one of these important statutory requirements is that the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, must review and certify the element as complete through the process. Next slide. State law also requires us that each housing element contains certain core components. Chief among these is the inventory of sites that are available for housing. It's typically shown on a map and a table with, together with projections of the realistic capacity for housing on each site. The housing element also needs to include an assessment of housing needs for groups like seniors, the disabled, or female headed households. And that's based on a review of census data and other factors. It also needs to include an assessment of environmental, regulatory, or market based constraints to housing. And it needs to include an analysis of impediments to access to fair access to housing for disadvantaged groups such as lower income households or linguistic or ethnic minorities. And then on the basis of all that analysis, the housing element needs to include an action plan of implementing programs that address the special needs identified, the housing constraints identified, and any fair housing issues identified. So now I'd like to Oh, yes, a term you hear a lot in the context of the housing element is RENA. It stands for the Regional Housing Needs Allocation. And it's essentially the total number of new housing units that the town must plan to accommodate in the upcoming eight year cycle from 2022 to 2031. RENA is separated into four affordability levels that are based on the area median income for Marin County. So households making less than 50% of the area median income are considered very low and households making more than 120% of the area median income are considered above moderate. This slide is showing Fairfax's RENA for the upcoming cycle. In total, it's 490 units split out between those different income categories. And so it's important to remember that the town is not required to build 490 units only to make sure that the zoning map has capacity to accommodate those 490 units at all times. Additionally, there are special requirements for the eligibility of sites that count towards the lower income RENA. And those have to do with the size. So typically, the sites that are counted for lower income RENA must be no smaller than half an acre and no larger than 10 acres in size. They need to be free of environmental constraints. They need to be close to public transit and they need to have deserved or have the availability of being served by utilities. And the reason for all this is because it's very expensive to build affordable housing. And so the intent of these laws is to really help communities find shovel ready sites and designate those for for lower income housing. As I mentioned, and you can see on the map, that Fairfax has a lot of environmental constraints. There are very few sites in town that actually meet those criteria. And so based on consultation with HCD, they wanted us to do some analysis to demonstrate and this is what this map is showing, that in fact, housing has been built in Fairfax in those environmentally constrained areas. And this analysis helps to demonstrate that while the environmental hazards are a constraint, they haven't been a grossly limiting factor on on housing. And so that's been incorporated into the housing element as well. Now I'd like to provide an overview of the of the content of the draft, starting with the revised sites inventory. So the map on the right of the screen shows sites that are available for housing.
Pardon me for interrupting.
Yeah.
This verbatim that's capturing your words. It's covering over the key for the map and I'm just wondering if there's something, could it be moved or reduced or is it there for? It's there for ADA reasons. Yeah, no, I understand that, but it's covering. I'll try. Okay. Hard to interrupt.
No, no, no problem. So the map is showing sites in Fairfax that are available for housing. And collectively, these sites have a realistic capacity for 583 new homes over the next eight years. That is sufficient to meet the town's RENA allocation of 490 units with a buffer of about 16%. And that buffer is necessary to make sure that the town can navigate the provisions, the no net loss provisions in state law, in the event that any one of the sites doesn't develop at the densities assumed in the inventory. And now let me walk through, now let me walk through this inventory sort of piece by piece. The inventory. It's not advancing. There we go. So the inventory projects a capacity for 71 new single family homes on vacant lots that are already zoned for residential development. That includes 11 pipeline projects, meaning projects that are currently proposed, under review, or recently approved. And it includes about 60 units on vacant lots with single family zoning. Excuse me. Additionally, the action plan of the housing element includes a program that that involves the town developing and adopting standards to permit clustered, single family homes and accessory units on large sites that have appropriate access and availability of utilities. The intent of this program is to allow small clustered housing on relatively flatter portions of these large hillside parcels, while also preserving larger areas of open space and ridge lines. The inventory also assumes capacity, or assumes the development rather, of various pipeline projects. I just mentioned 11 single family residential projects that are currently under review or recently approved. It also assumes the development of an eight apartment project, eight unit apartment project on the northern portion of the Fairfax Market site. The owner is currently preparing an application and plans to submit it to town staff shortly. And then it includes 175 units on the School Street Plaza site. And this project concept involves 140 market rate units and about 30 below market rate units. A program has been included in the Housing Element Action Plan that would involve establishing objective design and development standards that would integrate higher density housing on the site in a way that is sensitive to the surrounding context and the natural resources on the site. It would also involve staff, town staff, meeting quarterly with the with the property owner to help advance the project. It also involves working with the with the property owner to identify incentives such as perhaps reduced onsite open space in view of the proximity of the site to existing parks or perhaps shared parking that would help incentivize the provision of affordable housing onsite to help the town meet its RENA obligations. And then also, this program would help ensure that existing residents of the live work units on the site would have the first right of refusal for some of the new units or would receive relocation existence in compliance with state law. Next slide. The housing element also assumes the development of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. And these units can be counted towards RENA. The state allows, the state guidance allows for us to project future EDU production on the basis of the annual number of permits issued in Fairfax since 2018. Reviewing the permitting history, the town has permitted about 11 units each year since 2018 on average. But with a strong suite of programs that I'll review later in the presentation that are included in the action plan, we're actually projecting 20 ADUs and junior ADUs each year throughout the planning process through 2031. And then the inventory projects a capacity for 352 new multifamily units on underutilized commercial sites, primarily in the town center area and along Sir Francis Ray Boulevard. These sites, which are shown on the on the top map circled in gold, are all in locations with good access to transit, shops, and services as required under state law. New state law, it's important to note, Assembly Bill 2011 and Senate Bill 6 that both came into into force earlier this year, allow for housing development on commercial and office sites subject to design standards that are set by the state. So we've included a Program 2A in the Housing Action Plan that would create a workforce housing overlay applicable to to these sites that are outlined in gold on the top map. And that would give those property owners the option either to redevelop commercial uses consistent with the with the base zoning that's in place today. Or if they if they like, they would be able to add infill multifamily housing if they choose to do so. New development on those sites in the overlay would be subject to objective design and development standards that will be prepared as part of this project with input from the community and decision makers through the through the summer and the fall. Additionally, because several of the sites identified there were included on prior Fairfax Housing Element inventories, the zoning for these sites must be updated to allow housing by right if the owners propose to make about 20% of the units available to lower income households. So a program to that effect has also been included in the housing element. And then finally, the inventory assumes development of workforce housing on two adjacent town owned sites. And the town, on these sites, through a program in the housing element, the town would partner with a nonprofit developer to construct about 10 units on those sites that would be affordable to, for example, restaurant employees or service workers, teachers, public servants, and others who work in Fairfax and make less than 80% of the area median income. These sites in total together have a capacity of about half an acre. And again, as part of the process, objective design and development standards would be prepared in order to integrate new housing on those sites in a way that's sensitive to the surrounding context. It's unforced avenue. Please, let's let the consultant continue and you can address those comments at the Sure. in the near future. Thanks. Sure. Right. And so, and now let me give you an overview of the of the draft action plan. The draft action plan is organized around five goals that correspond to the requirements of state law and to the particular challenges that Fairfax faces. The goals are increase the range of affordable housing options to meet the housing needs of all economic segments of the community, address housing affordability by addressing regulatory process and market factors that limit housing production and preservation in Fairfax, promote suitable affordable housing for the special needs populations, including housing for lower income households, large families, single parent households, the disabled, older adults, and people experiencing homelessness, foster equal housing opportunity for all residents of Fairfax regardless of race, religion, sex, marital status, ancestry, national origin, color, or ability, and monitor the effectiveness of housing programs to ensure that that they respond to housing needs. So the first goal is to increase the range of of housing options available for all economic segments. This goal is supported by five policies and 13 implementation programs. And those programs really focus on a couple of things. They involve the development of a town center master plan to integrate new housing, but also to think about business vitality and streetscapes and that kind of thing. They involve the program that I mentioned specifically about School Street. They involve also the program I mentioned about workforce housing on town owned sites. But equally, they involve working to identify and match people in home sharing and tenant matching programs. So you can think of perhaps an older couple who whose children have maybe gone away to college and they have an extra room in the house. They might make that available for someone who works locally downtown. So it's a kind of a win win situation, perhaps older older adults on a fixed income might earn a little earn a little extra income by making a room available and someone who works in Fairfax might have an affordable housing opportunity that way. So that's what's intended there through that program. And additionally, there's a program to to look at accommodating innovative and non traditional forms of housing, which might involve modular housing, which can be cheaper to construct. And then on the right side of the screen is a whole suite of actions aimed at incentivizing the production of accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units in Fairfax, including an informational campaign to raise awareness, providing preapproved ADU floor plans. And so under this program, the town would would work with some local architects and have preapproved ADU floor plans made available so that interested homeowners could select a preapproved floor plan. And this would provide cost and time savings for them as a way of incentivizing production. The town would offer technical assistance. In addition to supplementing that, that's already available to Fairfax homeowners through Marin ADU. The town would consider offering fee discounts for homeowners who develop an ADU or junior ADU and make it available to lower income households. Also a financial assistance program and looking at zoning incentives that could encourage people to build to build more ADUs. Goal number two is about addressing affordability barriers by addressing regulatory process and market barriers. This goal is supported by seven policies and 10 implementing programs. The implementing programs include that developing that workforce housing overlay that I mentioned, the the by right rezoning program that I mentioned, also establishing those objective standards for multifamily and mixed use development, the clustered hillside residential development standards that I mentioned as well, and some programs that focus on streamlining process and permitting procedures. And the final one is a program that specifically came out of the the discussion of non vacant sites. As I mentioned, there are very few sites in Fairfax that meet those requirements for lower income RENA sites, largely because of the environmental constraints in the town center area. And so one of the ways that the town can help to alleviate those constraints and demonstrate the viability of them for redevelopment with housing during the period would be to do a focused geologic study to help identify specific measures that could be incorporated into into the town code that would facilitate the development. That would mean that the individual property owners wouldn't have to do their own geologic studies, but but the town would would assist them in identifying methods and techniques that could be used to safely build in areas of liquefaction risk. So the third goal is about promoting a suitable and affordable housing options for special needs populations. This one is supported by four policies and five implementing programs. A lot of it has to do with amendments to the town code to bring it into compliance with new state law. And so these these amendments would have to do with residential care facilities, transitional and supportive housing, low barrier navigation centers, and reasonable accommodations for people with disabilities. And then additionally, there's a program for the town to consider adopting inclusionary zoning requirements and or a commercial linkage fee. The fourth goal is about fostering equal access to housing for all residents. And this is supported by four policies and six implementation programs. And the key actions here have to do with affirmatively marketing the availability of of affordable housing opportunities in Fairfax, working to expand the use of housing choice vouchers for landlords who Working to expand the use of housing choice vouchers for landlords who may accept them and providing information on fair housing, tenant rights and mediation. Also collaborating with nonprofits to do anti discrimination and fair housing training and working with the Marin Center for Independent Living to provide additional support for people with disabilities in Fairfax. And the final goal is about monitoring the effectiveness of housing programs. This one is supported by three policies and four programs that commit the the town to doing annual review and reporting, also to specifically monitoring ADU and junior ADU production over the period and and taking corrective action to make sure that the town stays on track to to have those 20 units per year over the period. And because all of the the housing action really, the Housing Action Plan really does involve a lot of work to implement all these programs. There's a there's a program here for the town to look at options for bringing a housing specialist on board to to help the town make progress in implementing and make sure that the town stays in compliance with with state law. So finally, I'll just briefly touch on the next steps. There are a lot of legally mandated timeframes to keep in mind. Right now, as I mentioned, we're in the middle of a legally mandated 30 day review period for the draft housing element. That ends on April 30. Following that, we will bring community comments collected during the during the 30 day period and and the draft housing element to the town council for consideration. The council will not be taking action on May 3, but will be giving us direction to either incorporate comments that we've heard from the community or make other changes to the document, get it ready to send up to Sacramento so that the housing, the Department of Housing and Community Development can start their review. Under state law, they have 90 days to complete their review. And so additionally, there's the EIR scoping period, and I'll be making a presentation on on that later. That's also at 30 days running in close parallel with the review of the draft housing element. And then and then there will be a 45 days of public review on the on the draft EIR when that document is ready later this summer. And so looking ahead to next steps, as I mentioned, the 30 day public comment period ends on April 30. We do have a review with the town council of the draft housing element on May 3, and we're anticipating to submit to HCD on May 8 to start their 90 day review, which would end on August 6. And we'd be looking to bring the housing element to adoption, to a hearing for the town council to consider adopting on August 22. And and then in close in close parallel with that, we'll be we'll be starting up with the zoning amendments. And legally, those need to be adopted by the town council by January 31 of next year. Just in closing, I wanted to touch on some of the again, some of the legal requirements for the housing element. The the town is legally required to adopt a housing element that that complies with state law, and failure to do so can result in fines and penalties. Those could include limited access to state funding, including funding for local roadway maintenance or capital improvements. In extreme cases, the court can impose fines of up to $600,000 per month. There could be court mandated compliance where the the a court could appoint an agent to to bring the town's housing element into compliance. And the court could suspend Fairfax's local control over building matters. And the court could even approve housing developments and force the town to pay plaintiff attorney fees associated with that. So the consequences of not having an adopted housing element can be serious. And just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that as we move through this process. So happy to take any any comments, questions?
Great. Any questions from colleagues before we take public comment? It's a good question for Andrew.
Is this the time for questions on the draft itself, the housing element draft itself, or just on your presentation or?
We had thought of this really as an opportunity for for people to make comments on the draft. But I'm also happy if people have questions to to answer them.
Okay, I I have a few questions. The ADU allocation of 160, how did you come up with the distribution along the affordability or income categories?
That's a great question. So the Association of Bay Area Governments actually did an area wide survey of ADUs that have been produced since 2018, affordability survey. And the findings of that were that 60% of the ADUs developed in the Bay Area are generally affordable to lower income households and 30% to moderate and 10% to above moderate. And that survey or that study affordability study is in the process of being certified by HCD. And the purpose of ABAG doing it is so that jurisdictions in the Bay Area can rely on the findings to make those allocations. A similar process was done in the SCAG region in Southern California. And so those are the that's the the justification for that allocation.
Thank you. Another question I had with regard to the ADU estimate or allocation was the 80% growth rate? What what's? I understand that we have 11 per year and now you're projecting 20. And there are programs to support and incentivize, if you will, but could you just elaborate on? That frankly makes me a little nervous. That's a really strong growth rate. Could you just expand on?
Sure.
That why you think there's there will be such strong growth?
Right. I think it's it's a fair question. Fairfax was early on, you know, offered some incentives earlier than other communities, including the amnesty program, for example, that's been on the books for a while. And so you you've seen, you know, a pretty good rate of 11 per year. But what we're seeing is particularly around Marin County, we're really seeing the levels increase dramatically year on year. And especially through this housing element cycle as as communities start to implement a robust suite of programs like the ones that I outlined. We're expecting that that that'll really, together with the the wider awareness of the benefits of of ADUs for homeowners, they add significant, just having an ADU now adds significantly to property values. We've had discussions with architects, focus group discussions with architects active in the Marin in throughout Marin County, and they say, look, we don't even do a single family home without also incorporating an ADU into it. And so on the basis of of those conversations with architects and builders, the the increasing awareness in throughout the county and this robust suite of programs, we think we have a we're saying on fairground.
Okay, thank you. And then in my discussion with Heather, our town manager earlier this week, all of this locations or parcels, if you will, that are on the inventory list. Suffice to say, or I just wanted to confirm, if you could confirm for the public that there has been engagement with all of those parcel owners, there is interest and willingness and support from those parcel owners to be on that list. Is that correct?
Well, what I would say is we particularly focused on the commercial properties, the non vacant commercial properties. And we really made a focused effort to to reach out to each and every owner. So each and every owner who's on the list received a conversation. Not all of them responded. Not all of them attended our focus group meetings. But there were three or four who we did contact who said, look, I don't want my parcel to be on there. And we've removed those ones. So all the ones that are on there are either actively asked to be on there and and attended our meetings and contributed or did not actively ask us to to remove them. We're continuing to reach out to property owners. We do want to make sure that everyone's on on the list who knows they're on the list. And I also want to to underline that the the workforce housing overlay that we're that we're talking about doesn't commit anyone to building housing. As I said, if they want to continue to develop under the base zoning with commercial uses, that's entirely unchanged. The overlay is just giving the option to do more with their site if they choose.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you so much. Let me just go back to my list of questions here. I I have more of comments, just not questions. So thank you so much.
Can I just add that Mayor Cutrano and myself were on the Housing Subcommittee? So we asked a lot of questions in those four meetings. And thank you for, you know, thank you for your diligence in reviewing this council member helmet. It's a lot. So I look forward to hearing from folks in the audience.
And Councilmember Blash, I see your hand is raised as well. You have some questions?
Yeah. Okay, so one thing that I just wanted to note is so we're, you know, beyond the initial deadline for submitting this. But I did note that in the paper the other day, it said only 15% of Bay Area jurisdictions have actually completed their housing elements and had them, you know, approved or whatever by this time. So is that unusual? For a housing element cycle? Is there something special happening this time around?
Yes, you're you're it is very unusual. I would also point out that in the Southern California region, which started the process a year and a half before the Bay Area, still 60% of the of the jurisdictions in the SCAG region do not have a certified housing element. And so it is very different than the fifth cycle, the previous go round. And the reason is because the the bar has really been raised this time. There's a lot of new requirements for the eligibility of those lower income sites that I talked about. The whole new component of fair housing analysis and programs to address fair housing issues has been added. And additionally, HCD has hired a lot of people and they're really doing a very fine combed review of all these elements. And so that has led to frankly, it's taking jurisdictions three, four times cycles of review with HCD to to finally get to certification. So that's what it's not on. It's uncommon with this cycle, but it's not uncommon that that a jurisdiction is is beyond the date as this happened here in Fairfax.
Okay. And then it's, you know, great that there have been meetings with HCD and they know we're on track to complete. And you talked about a number of the legal issues that would occur if we did not get a compliant housing element. But I'm going to assume that some of that is not going to happen yet since we're working collaboratively with them. Is that?
Yes, yes. I think that that's a fair. HCD is open to working with jurisdictions. They understand the that there's a lot of new regulations and and everyone's having is 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 working through them. And so they, as I said, we met with HCD staff back in December to we had some particularly pointed questions about unique issues here in Fairfax, and they gave us some guidance on how to on how to on how to address them. And we're anticipating once we submit it, we're not just going to wait 90 days and then get their letter. We're going to engage them. We have some additional questions, some points of clarification. We're not going to hold back submittal. We'll submit first, but in try and engage them in in conversations throughout the 90 day review period so we can get an understanding of of what we need to do so we can hit the ground running and and address them, their comments when we receive them.
Okay. And then another timeline issue is, so we're looking at having this basically adopted in January 2024, I think. Then I think because we're handing it in late, we have to zone within a year. Is that a year of January 31st, 2024? Or what's the schedule?
Yeah, so we're actually looking to adopt the housing element on the 22nd of August of this year. And then the January 31 date that you're talking about is the requirement for rezoning. And that's because rezoning is necessary to accommodate the arena. And it because we didn't have a certified housing element by January 31 of this year, the zoning needs to be, the zoning update needs to be completed by January 31 of next year. And so that work has already started. My firm is also assisting the town with the with the zoning updates. And now that we have a relatively firm sites inventory, we can start to look at the design standards that are needed to implement it. And so as I mentioned in my presentation, sort of later this summer and through through September, we'll be working with the community and with decision makers to to develop and vet concepts for for that zoning so that we remain on track to have it adopted in January.
Okay. And then another concern I have is if for any reason we should not be able to complete that zoning. You know, are there additional, I'm going to assume there are additional penalties?
Well, I think HCD will likely not certify the housing element until until the zoning is adopted. So that is a, I don't know if that's a penalty necessary, but you know, it's an implication.
Okay. And then just a couple of small questions. In terms of the first right of refusal at School Street, does that include affordable units? Because I think some of the folks who live at School Street now are fairly low income. Would they get first right of refusal for those units if they qualified?
Yeah, so that is actually stipulated in in state law. I don't have the code at my fingertips and I don't know exactly the details, but the point of that is to make sure that the that everyone's aware of the requirements for those accommodations in state law and that provisions are made to ensure that people get the rights that are due to them.
Great. And then, you know, there's mention of partnering with a nonprofit to build housing on town owned land. You know, Mill Valley has done that, but they have a much larger piece of property. Is it realistic to build 10 units? Often we are told that they won't even touch the property unless it's at least 50 units. Is there a way to make that happen with 10 units?
I think there is. I'm also working in the city of Monterey and they recently partnered with an affordable housing developer to build nine units behind behind their city hall. So there there are projects. It depends. You you just need to find the right developer, the right fit. But that's what the the program would be to develop an RFQ with input probably from affordable housing developers and then put it out for for tender and 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 find the right partner to make it happen.
Great. And then maybe this is a little nitpicky, but on Appendix B, Housing Needs Chart B 31. You know, there's a, I mean, I'll ask probably more about this later, but you know, are the rents that are reflected there, do they include subsidized units in town or just, you know, private market units?
I would have to check on that. I don't, I can't remember the, is there a source on the bottom of it? Is it straight from Zillow or was it from a state database?
You know, I'm going to have to double check that.
If I'm remembering correctly, I think there was a, so ABAG prepared a data package that included a lot of this information for all jurisdictions to use. So I can check on the source of that and and find out.
And then I have comments, but I guess if we do comments, we do them later, right? And I guess that's to our staff.
Yes, I think.
Okay, because I will have other things later, but thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you, Councilmember Blash. I think at this time we can go out to the public in the room and then we'll go to the public on Zoom after that to provide comment. And just one more time, Andrew, the types of comments or what what the the focus of comments, could you provide a little bit? And set the stage for it?
Sure. So we're in the middle of a 30 day comment period. We're looking for feedback on the content. For example, are there, you know, are there other programs necessary to address local housing needs or address constraints? Are there modifications needed to any of the programs that we've talked about? That that kind of that that kind of comment, anything that can help us refine the 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 content of this housing plan. So we'll collect all the comments, as I say, community feedback, summarize that, and we'll be ready to present the draft with those community comments for the council's consideration on May 3. So anything, any changes people would like to see to the draft, edits, additions, that kind of thing is what we're looking for.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Well, we will invite folks up to the dais or to the podium here to provide comment. And we'll go ahead and folks can take three minutes. Yeah, that'd be great. Jack? Could you please press the turn the mic on? Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Jack Judkins. I'm a resident of Fairfax, 263 Bolinas Road. I am also the vice chair of the Open Space Committee. So I'm going to take three minutes to talk on behalf of the Open Space Committee, and then I'm going to return and talk on my own behalf. So I I'm very impressed by the amount of work you put into it since the last iteration I saw. I was very heartened by a number of things I think I heard. I am playing serious catch up. My timing of a vacation was not good. To I haven't even looked at the draft. So that's not really how I would like to jump into this. So I'm going to be a little bit scattered, but from an open space perspective. What really confuses me about this process is the degree to which every other action that the town has taken or that other regional jurisdictions, including ABAG, have been taken. every other action that the town has taken or that other regional jurisdictions, including A Bag, have been taken, seem to be forgotten. I mean, is that true or is it not? For example, several of the properties that you've identified are in areas that A Bag, through its rigorous priority conservation area process, which was a partner to the housing process. Thank you, sorry. The PCA process was a partner to the to the housing needs process. Or at least followed on after an earlier version of that. And so these properties have been designated as pri- priority conservation areas. That being true, how can you then turn around and say, no, we're going to develop housing on these? That just seems to me to be totally inconsistent. Likewise, I mean, I've heard that a number of policies are going to be acknowledged, but perhaps changed through zoning change and general plan change. Because there are, you know, a huge number of general plan issues, especially with respect to open space properties, especially with respect to the open space properties that have been identified. Priority open space properties that come to bear like ridgeline development and, and view issues and water issues and a whole host. So is the housing element, you know, is, is every other policy subservient to the housing element? I don't understand why that should be so. But I would urge those sorts of thoughts to, to be in the forefront of your mind. Finally, you know, again, this is scattered, I apologize. But in terms of clustering, I'm, I'm wondering if there is a way to identify a portion of properties that might be used in particular for low income housing to satisfy the needs by clustering. And instead of putting the whole entire property, including those most valuable open space areas into this inventory, why not just include those portions that are clustered or that would be clustered if that's the approach? So I, I appreciate that that's something that you're going to look at and I hope that that's something that comes out of it. Finally, I would urge the town council to consider adding members of the public to your committee that is working with the consultant. I mean, honestly, I, I try to keep on top of this stuff. And, and I simply have been caught by surprise again and again and again. And I know it's because I'm not paying enough attention. But, but really, I can't believe that, I understand the urgency. Believe me, I do. I believe personally that there's a lot of good to be done by developing housing. But, you know, it just feels as a citizen that we're not getting any input into this. I know you, you're trying.
Jack, that's time, but I know you want to call up again. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everyone. Kevin Curtis, non-resident, Jason in San Anselmo. The comment I wanted to make is, is more of a suggestion and, and I guess I'll reserve the, the comments for in a few minutes. But the suggestion is about the, the elephant that's kind of been in the room this whole time in Fairfax, which is the Marin Town and Country Club. Twenty-three plus acre, flat vacant, mostly vacant parcel. I'd just like to make a suggestion. At this point, we, I kind of have a good idea as to where everything stands with it. Not being included on the sites list. Referencing the December meeting with the HCD and Diet Bahia, that there may have been a statement from HCD saying that that property could not be placed on the sites list, is my understanding. But at this point, maybe just as a solution, perhaps, looking forward, I just wanted to make the suggestion that we put a program in place in Fairfax. Specific program that's placed into this paperwork being submitted for adoption, both to certification to HCD and within the town, specifically addressing the future for that property. Whether it be allocating future funds towards a voter initiative or whether it be zoning, rezoning, or some other aspect that may come to a solution. Because I certainly know the property owner wants to work with you. So bringing, you know, in perhaps with that program, bring all stakeholders to the table in a more functional manner, maybe work best. Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. Next speaker.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. On your little signs, it says realistic accommodation. Well, the realistic accommodation versus what the arena numbers are, are worlds apart. Into what infrastructure? Fairfax has been raided the worst roads in Marin County. On the street that I live on, they had to dig up the PG and E pipes so that there wasn't San Bruno two. And my understanding is that similar situation exists on Bolinas Road. So you're going to put more housing, more demand onto an infrastructure that can't deal with what there is right now? You talk about a hundred and seventy-five units at School Street Plaza. Is that with or without parking? Because if there's no parking, they're going to park in the neighborhoods. And anyone's delusional idea that people are going to take mass transit is just that. Go try to find a used car. Prices are through the roof because people want cars. And they're always going to want cars. So without that accommodation, that's absurd number. Three hundred and fifty-two units in the town center. I really doubt that the existing foundations of the buildings there can are, are substantial and up to half second or third stories on top of them. A lot of those are really old. Who even knows if they're earthquake resistant as they're supposed to be? So basically what you're talking about is ripping up the entire downtown. The town spent six hundred and eleven thousand dollars on incompetent consultants before you. One would think that there would have been some type of completion expectation included in the contract, but it seems like we spent instead a hundred thousand over what the contract was. And now you're talking about hiring a geologist? And you're talking about hiring a housing specialist? With what funds? A lot of this stuff is totally unrealistic. And when you talk about nonprofits for housing, what you're talking about is they don't pay taxes. Just like Victory Village isn't paying taxes for fifty-five years. That means the tax burden goes on to those who live here now and own property and pay property taxes. What kind of equity is that? As far as robust suite of programs incentivizing ADUs and JADUs, we just put in the most draconian rental control, just cause, et cetera, which is totally turning people off to putting in ADUs and JADUs. So really, your twenty number is a pipe dream and I don't know what's in the pipe.
Thank you, Mark. Next speaker.
Hello, town council, Michael McIntosh. A couple of statements, the liquefaction. Really, the entire basin is the same thing and it's colloquial as opposed to alluvial. There are different sediment loads in small places, but you can see by the stratification, that's colloquial. So I don't think the liquefaction is what we hear of like in the city. One, two, the comment presented that HCD thought that my property had to be rezoned is a false statement. And I'm not sure where I just heard that. But in also speaking to HCD, the direct comment that was given to us was they were very surprised we were not included on the housing element site opportu- opportunity list. And I know to the town, I present to you two, two things. One, I present to you as a common law city, you cannot have two conflicting laws and I've given you case law to support that also. In addition, I've also provided to you, as others have also, a copy of the letter from San, excuse me, from HCD to San Diego, stating very clearly with against supporting case law, that you cannot have voter zoning trumping state law. So again, my property is certainly available. So it's really a subjective approach that you want to exclude it. But more importantly, my property is also the only property that can go through this process without the extreme expenses that will be burdened by the town to bring in infrastructure anywhere else. Looking at some of the sites, HCD also said they'd be excluded, such as the Miranda Heights or Wall property has a collective slope of fifty point two degrees. The property that you've recently included on Forest Avenue has a slope of sixty-three degrees. At a half acre site, if you look at your FAR, it is not buildable. In addition, Forest Avenue has the drainage on the uphill side. It's not reinforced. It'd have to be completely rebuilt. But again, looking at how the town is going about this and subjectively excluding certain properties as my own, you're harming the town as a whole and you're giving everybody the opportunity to challenge this. So I really encourage you to put aside whatever prejudicial approaches you have that exclude my property since nineteen forty-three. Please recall in nineteen forty-three, the town of Fairfax sued Max Friedman because Max Friedman wanted a club. The town wanted housing and they rezoned my property for housing. After they lost that suit and could not pay Max Friedman a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, they came to an agreement that Max could expand his club. He could bulldoze the largest midden shell mound in the Ross Valley under the Good Earth Natural Food Store, sell off that as topsoil and then cancel over the buildings to the Fairman Fair and some shopping center over the creek. He gifted you guys Center Boulevard, which was an old railroad easement. Then seventy-two, when you decide to sell it, then you reverse that zoning. So the town really has a poor position regarding my property. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Hi, everybody listening in Zoom out there. This is Todd Greenberg. I live downtown in Fairfax. I have to question a number of things and excuse me for those who already know some of these, but a lot of us don't. And a lot of us are having a hard time finding these things out. And I'm going to try to speed through things and not use time unnecessarily, but I have twelve, thirteen items here. One is timing. Two, there's multiple Brown Act violations that have gone on repeatedly in this town that affect this hearing tonight. As far as I know, there were no online public notes provided for anyone else to see. San Rafael does this, Mill Valley does this, Fairfax needs to do this. When somebody wants to come up and comment, they need to know what other people have commented to this town. It is a violation of the Brown Act and this whole meeting, as I understand it, could be invalidated. Okay, that's not the way we should be doing business. Three, the report, even though I recognize that the firm is capable, is unfortunately, because not enough people locally were interviewed, only a very small section of people were interviewed, is biased and incomplete. Four, not all owners, as Mr. Hill indicated, of past or present identified sites were contacted. There should be an overlay in this presentation of all the prior identified sites and a discussion of why they've been not included in this one. Also, we missed the deadline for the fifth cycle housing element. How is it that we are now subject to the sixth cycle element? This feels like some version, it's probably not legally correct, but some version of extortion where our back is up against the wall in Fairfax and we're forced to spend money supposedly. But we're not getting any results for it and now we're subject to greater demands than we were previously. Somebody, it would be nice if it was explained to the public. Seven, what about the cost here? There's no discussion of cost benefits, no, no cost benefits analysis on what sites would cost less to develop. Why is that? Are we not fiscally minded on what makes sense on how we spend town funds? Number eight, ADUs, and this is an important one. How many per year? And as Mark Bell said earlier, nobody in their right mind wants to build an ADU here anymore because the town's in a hostile environment. The town has passed the strictest in California rent controls. Nobody in their right mind wants to build an ADU. That needs to be remedied. And until it's done, it won't happen. Number nine, affordable housing, what is that? Is affordable housing just a push button? We're going to approve it? There are lots of different types of affordable housing. And as Mark mentioned, a lot of it, like Sherman Oaks now, doesn't pay taxes. It gets a tax holiday or a partial tax holiday that hurts the tax base here in Fairfax. So again, cost benefits, this needs to be contemplated on the benefit of the whole town. Number ten, if I may, thank you, is the innovative and non-traditional housing. And your discussion of it being a win-win on the, the notation just above that. There is no win-win in Fairfax right now. There is lose-lose. People are fleeing Fairfax. Renters cannot find places. Twenty units have been taken off the market. I suggest that you include the loss, which is probably the developers ideal here. Why not build more high density wind cup type housing? The losses, there should be a discussion of the losses of rental housing that have happened because of these rental ordinances that are going to increase the need for more high density, high-rise housing, which Fairfax doesn't want, by the way. Number eleven, the Affordable Housing Committee, which should have some input on this, seems to be very rarely meeting and very inactive. Number twelve, there's no questioning of the state law. Newport Beach and other jurisdictions are suing the state. Why is it that we're rolling over? Fairfax has fought the state successfully in many years past. Why are we spending money that we don't have, rolling over to do plans that aren't realistic? It just doesn't make sense to a common person.
Thanks, Todd. That's your time. You're a little, couple minutes over, but thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thanks, Chance. My name is Rob Schwartz, Fairfax resident, six one five Oak Manor Drive. I'm not a good public speaker, nor am I well versed in these matters. So we'll see what comes out of my mouth over the next three minutes or two minutes and forty-five seconds. First of all, I have a lot of appreciation for the work that's gone into us. I've been following the process, the change in in consultants and everything, everyone here. Everyone from the speakers to you, to the town council is obviously between a rock and a hard place. And I kind of genuinely feel that everybody's doing the best they can. Nonetheless, I have some feedback and that I want to, that I want to, I think it's mostly directed towards you, Andrew, so here goes. And it's mostly about the transparency of the process. And again, I, I recognize that that could just be, you've been doing the best you can, given the time constraints. So am I too close to the mic? Thanks, Mallory. Was that Mallory? Hi, Mallory. Haven't seen you in a while. So this is, so my experience, I'm just going to share my experience about the, the process of giving feedback. So I have a large site. I have one of these large sites that's being discussed and we've been discussing infill on a very tiny portion of that property. One of them, interestingly enough, given the need for affordable housing, is a one acre flat area, fronting Sir Francis Drake Boulevard, in an area where there's a lot of other affordable housing or multifamily housing. There's a bus stop that accesses it. We offered it, we even spoke about it in February. I was given a lot of feedback thinking, hey, this is, this is, we like, we like this spot, Rob. Are you willing to write a, a letter to the, to the state expressing your interest in, in in allowing the site to be used? I said, absolutely. The next interaction we had, it's missing from the housing inventory list completely. So that's twenty units of, of including some affordable housing, which is suddenly gone. So since I found that out on March thirty-first, I've been asking why? And you've done your best because I know you've got a lot on your plate. I've gotten a few answers and also. I've gotten a few answers and also some, I think, I think it was you, Heather, who reached out to me today and said, you know, we're probably on the same page here. We just have to discuss it. But I don't think we are actually. I kind of feel like I've been getting the runaround. No offense. Here's why. I've been given multiple reasons. First, I was told it was because, ah, we don't have plans to rezone it. But my understanding is, thanks, Mallory, my understanding is actually that a number of properties do need to be rezoned. When I questioned that, I was told, oh, actually, it's about, what was it? Oh, you didn't submit a plan. I wasn't asked to submit a plan. I do have a plan. If you'd like a site plan, I've got it. Then I was told, it's because, what was, oh, realistic capacity constraints. So I've addressed that in an email today, probably haven't had time to review it, addressing it. It seems very realistic, especially given the fact that one hundred and seventy-five units on School Street, even though I support the downtown infill, it's not going to happen. You're going to need extra, extra locations. I'll just summarize in ten seconds. So basically, I feel like something more may be happening. What I've been told, the responses I've been getting don't make sense, the entire process. This is just regarding my one site, which is possibly twenty units that we're missing. It doesn't, it doesn't square with me. So I look forward to having a conversation with you at some point where we can clear it up directly. Thanks.
Thank you, Rob. Next speaker, please.
I'm sorry to make a technical issue over Camer, School Street. The audio in Zoom out in the world is fine. The audio here is way oversaturated. In other words, the gain for us is not equal to the gain on the street, so we have to adjust the audio. Might not know if he's on headphones. And the prior public comment, the comment about public involvement, public involvement is very lacking. The Affordable Housing Committee, I resigned from it because we were not meeting. We're, we're putting together overlays. And the mission statement or the resolution of the Affordable Housing Committee was to create overlays. I don't know. I just can't figure that out. Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Next speaker, please.
Evening, members of the council. My name is Scott Hawkstrasser. I own a property at one four one Belinas Road. I'm a land use planning consultant. Been doing this for forty years in this county. And I actually was a recipient of an affordable housing unit that's on a fifty percent slope off of Glen Drive. It was a owner builder project that we did several years ago. I'm here working with and representing Rob, who spoke earlier about the property at six one five Oak Manor. We're concerned that the revised sites that went through the process eliminated his site. And we'd like to see it reinstitute and put back on the list. And I suspect that that came about in conversations that you had with HCD. I don't know that. I don't know what kind of reason there is for taking it off the list. I do know that it has a one-acre site on Sir Francis Drake that is a logical place for at least twenty units of affordable attached multiple residential housing right on the transit stop. So we'd like to see that put back into the list and analyzed. I noticed that no one commented on the scope of the environmental review. And I think you have an opportunity in the environmental analysis to look at other sites, alternative sites, and opportunities that aren't listed in the housing element. Lastly, I'd just like to say that I think the policy that talks about clustering housing or the cluster development is basically designed to fail. I mean, this, this town has been talking about hillside development for centuries. And there is some, and there is some very, very restrictive policy in the general plan and very restrictive zoning. And that needs to be changed basically completely, wholeheartedly. And I think the, the issue here is I don't think you can do that in the time available. And I think what you're going to run into is an internal inconsistency between your land use element and your housing element and your open space element. And I think that was, somebody said that earlier. So I really respect and admire all the work that's been done. And I think there's a lot more work to be done. I just hope you can do it within the timeline so that we don't get shut down as a town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Town Council, Kelly London, Fairfax, twenty-five years. One of the last sweet charming villages left in Marin. Throughout Fairfax's history, hardworking citizens in the town council have worked endlessly together to preserve its ridge lines, overbuilding and its small town character. Please don't fail to protect the interests of this town's citizens by allowing overbuilding and proportionately out of character apartment buildings. Protect the citizens of Fairfax's interests. It's your duty. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Next speaker?
Mallory, good. Hi, Fairfax. I was waiting to see if any social Democrats are going to wait till the end. But I guess not. Okay, so I have a few things. I have two questions. One is a sixth of an acre for people who work here, who need affordable places. Did you say a sixth of an acre? Or an eighth of an acre? You said something like that.
If you could just give comment and then we'll address it.
Oh, I thought, I thought we were open to questions.
Not back and forth questions, but you could just put your questions out there and we'll address.
My question is, well, I heard, I heard a sixth of an acre for people who were working here. And I just, so my comment is, I think that's absurd. And I mean, how many people can live on, on that amount? I also have a question about, are you going to kick out people who live at, who've, who've paid a lot of money to fix up their places at School Street Plaza? And, or are you going to build around them? So I'd like to know that because I think it's really unfair for people to get kicked out of places that they've lived in, that they want to live in. And it seems completely against what we're talking about here. And, which I could read. Okay, and I wanted to say, I'm not speaking for the Affordable Housing Committee, but I've been on it for three or four terms, at three or four terms. And we, we don't meet and that's true and I'd like that to change. And I would like people who are laypeople to be in on these meetings and in on these decisions. Because I think that's important. And your report is great, but to me it sounds like hype dreams. And I don't, I don't see how that's going to work here. And I don't see how it can work here, although it sounds really good. And I know you guys get paid a lot to do what you know how to do. But I don't think you know how to do it in Fairfax. And I think that makes a really big difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory. Any other speakers in the room?
Jack Jenkins. Again, now I'm speaking on my own behalf. So I would say there's, I don't know, four or five or six things that I would say are most important. One is to respect the overriding themes and policies of the general plan. I mean, this is a community that prides itself on a number of things, especially the natural environment in which we're located. Two, I, you know, I'm very familiar with the secret process. I've been engaged in many of those. And I would say, you know, our priority ought to be to adopt an approach that is from the get-go, the least environmentally impactful. And, you know, we have any number of issues in this town and throughout the state that need to be acknowledged. And I don't need to mention to you what they are. So I'm curious, and maybe this is in your document, but if you could amplify, if it isn't, on why Town Center is not qualified for low income. It just seems astounding to me that, that the wealth they can build wherever they want, but you can't build housing for low income because of some supposed constraint. I would suggest that you provide a map, if you haven't already, that, that actually shows what amount of housing you're, you're anticipating for each property by type and, and, you know, ADU or, or single-family home or cluster. I would suggest that the priorities in doing this be infill housing, low-income housing, respect the open space element and the other policies of the general plan and cluster housing. Let's see. Oh, and I would think that it'd be incredibly helpful for us to have a compendium of, of ways in which you can develop low-income housing, sources of funding and the like. Who, who are partners? How do you go about doing it? You know, a how-to guide. I mean, maybe there are people in the town, maybe the town itself is capable of doing it, but it hasn't seemed to happen. Finally, I agree that we are, you know, we, as, as well as all the cities and towns in this state are being asked to solve a statewide problem. And, you know, there are so many associated issues like water, like transportation, like public transportation, that housing, money for housing, that the state is simply not doing. And I think that gives a tremendous amount of leverage in a kind of an equitable sense for us to say to the state, whoa, us and others similarly situated. And I'm wondering if there's anything going on, you know, at the state level amongst cities and towns to say, whoa, you know, we can't solve all of the state's problems for it. I mean, you know, if you want to build housing, put money and a ton of money towards it and start. That's enough. Thank.
Thank you, Jack. Anyone else in the room? Otherwise, we'll go over to Zoom. We have another comment period on the, for the next section, so I would just hold the comment until that and I really appreciate it. We'll go to Zoom. Nope, okay. Yep, go ahead, Deb.
I, I'll have a little go. Admittedly, I'm behind the eight ball on this and I'm not that educated on it. And I did not have time to read the two-inch packet. But I guess I wanted to just support Michael Mack. It's kind of unfathomable that his, his, his property has been ignored and, and excluded from this process. And I support Mark Bell with the street, the School Street project. That's going to be insane. And I also do not believe that we need as a little town of Fairfax to enter into the realm of skyscrapers and high-rise buildings. I really admired Newport Beach in Southern California. And there's a couple other towns in Southern California that have basically told State of California to go pound salt because they are refusing to be, to have to change the, the spirit of their towns into these, into urban environments. And I think Fairfax, it would be a great example. I think Fairfax should tell the state to, to just know. But however, I do believe that you have no choice in the matter because you've taken state money and I might be wrong about this. And so therefore you're obligated to play ball with them. But I think that we should, this little town should not have to turn into an urban environment just because the state says so. I think we have a say and I just, I don't like this at all. And I, and there's many people who don't. And I think it's just going to ruin, one more thing that's going to ruin Fairfax besides the, the extreme strangulating, paralyzing rent control ordinances, which you knew I'd have to slip in there, right? So tell the state to get lost. We don't need to do that. We don't need to play that game. We can be like Newport Beach and the couple other towns down there. Think about it. Look into it. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go to Zoom now.
Okay, if you're on Zoom and you want to make a comment, please raise your hand now. I see three raised hands at the moment.
Great.
First is Michael Sexton, followed by Philip S. And Michael, you're unmuted now.
Great, thank you very much. Michael Sexton, Director of Fairfax Residence and Marin Residence. I just, first of all, want to echo the insightful comments by Mark Bell, Michael McIntosh, Todd Greenberg and Deb and Kelly London. They're very smart and very concerned residents. In my view, one of the easiest ways to increase affordable housing is to, by incentivizing ADU and alternative rental housing. But the current rent control ordinances disincentivize ADU construction. It seems to me that the current rent control ordinances are in direct opposition to the goals of creating affordable housing. One of the questions for the consultants in regards to ADU projections, is there a methodology? Or there is a methodology to estimate the number of ADUs to be added? But is there a corresponding methodology for counting the removal of current ADUs from the rental market due to the rent control ordinances or the suppression of future ADU construction due to the reticence of homeowners to build because of these ordinances? How do these ordinances factor in to the estimates that were developed for the ADU or future ADUs? I would suggest that this is a serious concern and a major factor that needs to be considered when estimating future rental units. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. The next speaker is Philip S., followed by Carla. And Philip, you're unmuted now.
Hi there. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So I just think there's a couple of things here. This is absolutely insane for the consultant to be counting twenty units a year over the next eight years. That's a totally unrealistic figure. Who in their right mind is going to build an ADU when it's going to be subject to rent control? Nobody's going to do that. I think if that's still, still on the plan, I think your plan is ridiculous. So that's the first thing. I feel, obviously I feel very strongly about that. Second point I would like to make, one hundred and seventy-five units at School Street, really? With no parking? What's going to happen in a fire? What's going to happen in a flood? How are we going to get out of town? It's impossible. That also is not, not viable. So going back to a couple other commenters had mentioned the Town Country site. That's got to be looked at. That is the number one site that can put down, put a dent in the housing needs. And somebody somewhere has got to make that happen. If it, if it takes putting a initiative on the ballot to reverse whatever took place in the past, that should be done. I mean, why, why are we wasting millions of dollars on consultants when whatever a, a, a initiative would cost, would, the, the cost of that would, would be a fraction of what we paid these consultants to, to dance around and to try and find housing here and there and around town when it just doesn't exist. So just, you need to take the hundred and sixty units of ADUs and JADUs out of your plan. The other thing I would say is you also need to factor in that as many as thirty percent of all ADUs will be removed from the market because of rent control. These are things that are happening now. So that has to be factored in as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. Next speaker?
Next speaker is Carla, followed by PJ Pfeffer. Carla, you're unmuted now.
Hello. Hello, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Hi, my name is Carla Culbertson. I'm an owner in both Fairfax and San Anselmo. And I happen to be one of the owners of one of those large properties that you've included, not to any of my knowledge whatsoever. And it's not zoned for the number of units that you claim that you can put on it. So are you planning to rezone it is my question? And why was I not notified that you were putting it on, in your general plan in the first place? Question mark. And I, again, I echo what the last two speakers said. I echo what a number, Mark Bell, Todd Greenberg, Michael McIntosh. We, if we're so concerned about taking care of our natural features, why are we not looking at viable sites? You know, why are we not looking at how we can continue to develop in a natural, beautiful, you know, ecological way in this community? And why are we spending this kind of time and effort and money trying to, 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 to create a puzzle? In a sense, or to make sense out of things. I agree with the last speaker. It seems like you're jumping through hoops when there are, are real reasonable viable, you know, properties in which some great things could be done. And so I, I just urge you to, to really take a step back for a moment and think, what's the purpose here? What are you trying to accomplish? And what kind of environment do you want? And what kind of environment do you want to create? And how important is it at the end of the day to maintain the character and the nature that everyone loves Fairfax for? And then finally, there is no way I would ever develop my properties in this environment for precisely the reason that the other people said, which is there's no way I want to be a landlord. That needs to be seriously looked at because this has to be a win win for everybody. It can't just be a win for the renters. It has to be a win for the people who actually pay tax dollars and live there. And the people who support this community and run it should be homeowners in it so they can feel what that feels like. Because we're the ones who pay the taxes. We're the ones who pay for everyone's. We're the ones paying for this housing element. The end of the day. So I ask you to really take a step back and take a look at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Carla.
Thank you, Carla.
The next speaker is PJ Pfeffer, and that's the last raised hand. PJ, you're unmuted now.
Hey, thanks. It's PJ Pfeffer speaking solely on my own behalf as an individual. Sorry, I didn't have anything planned other than talking about the lack of discussion of public transit. I think one of the main concerns historically in the area is the limited way in and out of town and the dependence on cars. You know, I know people aren't taking public transit. I don't know. I have other housing elements are discussing policies and plans to increase that. One of the main reasons people don't take public transit generally is because of a lack of reliability. And so long as the Golden Gate Transport and Marin keeps pairing back service to match current ridership, I don't think we're going to meet that. You need to have maximum service to encourage increased ridership. I did want to then bring up because I agree with the earlier speaker that you know, tenant protections are important for this process. So, you know, sort of in the opposite manner as to what's been said. Because rent control and tenant protections have existed in California for decades in the housing element process. They've not been used to suggest that there's any decrease in development or to curtail any ability to count ADUs developed or other housing developed. Quite to the contrary, the main focus for concern in this housing element cycle, as I've seen, has been the new affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements, all of which cite tenant protections and affordability and things like that as a goal and a policy to be aspired to and something that actually helps you get through the HCD process. So it'd be a real shame if we did anything to disrupt that. I know countywide, the one comment they got back was not doing enough to affirmatively further for housing and, you know, in our programs in our action plan, we talked about it in the draft you have. Some of the risks included in the housing element dependencies, assisted housing risk of conversion, converting low income rentals to market rent or to condos. You know, the the eviction protections definitely help prevent that housing cost and affordability. You know, having these sorts of protections do make it easier for affordable housing providers, which in Marin County are already subject to rent and eviction protections. It it allows them to have a more even footing to compete for housing so that their their dollar goes just as far as market rate and profit maximizing investors. So I think they're doing a great job at being able to give affordable housing development a chance. Thanks.
Thank you, PJ.
Thank you. There is another raised hand. And that is Richard A. Richard, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, Council Richard Applebaum, sixty one Woodland. I guess you know, many of us in the community, as as this process has been going on for for quite some time now, I've just been frustrated with our kind of way things have unfolded with the state and the process and how it's unfolding. And so obviously, you needed to get the right help to be able to do this and to to be able to try to update the the housing element. And I'm just wondering whether, since it's been also brought up again tonight, I know I've commented on this many, many times in the past, whether we might be able to explore an additional legal team person, someone who has a a focus towards how there might be some fight or pushback to the state. So not in place of all the work that you're already doing, the plans that you're making, but in addition to so that, you know, if there might be some possibilities, if some things are happening in other communities in the state that we could know about that be linked up, I I have to believe there are some legal minds that are available to us that might have some fresh thinking on on how we can push back a little bit. I think that, you know, many people have specific concerns of one type or another, but the amount of new development that's contemplated over the next eight years is going to have tremendous impact on our town. And many of us, me included, are just obviously somewhat despondent, frankly, that, you know, the face of the town may may change significantly, and there may be consequences that we can't even fully understand yet. So I'm just wondering whether or not we could get some some new legal thinking in parallel. So that's just my thought for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
There are no more raised hands, Mayor.
Okay. Then we will close public comment on that. And yeah, we could take a break. But before we do that, Andrew, just want to for this meeting, are you able to reply to any of the questions? Or is that something that we will address at the May meeting when you take all the comments and kind of aggregate them and provide responses?
Yeah, I think it's probably better to do it holistically and and present a summary of the comments and 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 how they've been reflected in the draft or not, and if if not why at the May third meeting.
Okay. Thanks. And just for for anybody else who was listening and didn't provide comments yet, just want to remind folks that you can also provide comments to the housing element email address. What what is that, Heather?
Yes, it's housing@townoffairfax.org.
Great. So that'll just be where we aggregate all of our comments and in one email. So with that, we'll take a five minute break and then come back for the next portion. Okay. We are starting the next section here. And this is the presentation on the EIR covering the is this the Sequo process flow and environmental resource categories addressed? Okay. Take it away.
There we go. Yes, we're ready to start. So this portion of the of the meeting is devoted to is is essentially a scoping meeting for the for the EIR. I would say that in August and September of last year, the the town initially released a notice of preparation for an environmental impact report for for the project. And as Heather alluded to at the top of this meeting, because the some of the sites on the inventory have changed and the capacity projections have changed, the town decided to re-release the notice of preparation to give people an opportunity to comment on the revised sites list if they wish. I'd also note that anyone who submitted a comment in response to the earlier NOP does not need to submit another comment because all of the previous comments will also be considered in preparation of this draft EIR. But people are welcome to make an additional comment or to comment on on new sites or or the different capacity projections if they would like. But in my presentation tonight, I wanted to just quickly go over the environmental review process to talk about the the various environmental resource categories that will be discussed and addressed in the EIR to mention some of the likely environmental impacts, but then really to provide an opportunity for members of the of the public to provide comments on the scope and the content of the EIR. And in particular, we're not looking for comments on the housing element, but rather the potential impacts of implementing the housing element. So, you know, what are the potential environmental impacts? What are some strategies that could be used to address those impacts? Or what are some alternatives to to the proposed sites inventory or programs in the housing element that could reduce or avoid impacts? That's the type of comment that we're looking for tonight. And that'll be the real lion's share of the time will be given over to public comment on the scope and content of the EIR. So again, the purpose of the it will will be preparing a programmatic EIR, which means what we're looking at implementation of the whole of the sites inventory rather than particular projects on any individual site under the under the housing element. The purpose of the EIR is to provide information to decision makers and the public. It's to describe the proposed plan, i.e. the housing element, to characterize the existing environmental setting, to identify and describe potential environmental effects of implementing the housing element, and to introduce or recommend mitigation measures that could prevent or avoid significant damage to the environment. This slide. This is an overall snapshot of the process. As you can see, we're just starting out. We've released the notice of preparation at the at the beginning of April, and we're in the middle of a thirty day scoping period. This is the opportunity for people, as I say, to provide comments on the scope and the content of the EIR. You can do so in orally here tonight or in writing. And we have Heather's email address as the as the point of contact for written comments. The public comment period on the scoping period ends on May second, so there's still lots of time to prove to provide comments if you would like. Following the close of that scoping period, will the consultant team will work on on completing the environmental review, all of the comments received. And again, I say the comments that were received on the prior NOP as well as new comments will be considered in the preparation of a draft EAR. That'll be published in a couple of months. Once it hits the street, it will be again available for public comment for a period of forty five days where people can really review the details and and provide additional comment. Following the close of that forty five day comment period, we'll consider all those comments, and we will provide responses to all of the comments on environmental issues. The final EIR, including those responses to comments, will then be released and will move into public hearings before the the Planning Commission and the Town Council. So as I say, we're still early days in the process, but those sort of orange colored boxes represent opportunities for public input, and there's there's still many of those coming up.
Andrew, just you said Heather's email. I think you meant so if people have comments on the scoping for the EIR or the EIR, it does it go to the housing at Town of Fairfax?
I think we actually included Heather's email in the in the.
Oh.
So actually, we the first NOP had my email address on it, so we kept that consistent.
Okay, very. Well, that's going to be a full email box.
It already is.
Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, but that's a good point. There is there is another email address that's been set up especially for comments on the housing element. And that could be an effective way of of separating to understanding what is on the housing element and what is on the EIR. So there's different email addresses. But both of them are posted on the on the town's website, and we hope that it'll be clear to people.
Thank you.
This slide is showing all of the resource categories that are that are included in EIR, considered in EIR. There's about sixteen of them in total, and they run from everything from aesthetics and visual resources to air quality, biological resources, greenhouse gas emissions, but also pop land use and population, noise, recreation, public services, transportation, wildfire risks of really runs the gamut. All of these topics will be considered in the EIR. However, just given local conditions here in Fairfax, we can tell right away that several of these topics will require careful analysis. For example, air quality, an increase in in vehicle emissions associated with with new housing could result in in new trips that new car trips that produce air pollution. And so those effects need to be analyzed and and mitigation measures needed to be need to be addressed as appropriate. Biological resources, there's extensive resources throughout Fairfax. So careful consideration of the location of proposed housing in relation to where those resources are will be required and mitigation measures again will be need will need to be developed to minimize or avoid those impacts. Geology and soils, as we've discussed earlier this evening, there are significant, there are areas of high liquefaction risk and landslide risk throughout Fairfax. And so consideration of of those risks and actions to mitigate them will be will will be an important focus of the EIR. Vehicle miles traveled is the metric for the key metric for evaluating transportation emissions. And so that'll be a a careful focus of the EIR as well. Water supply, new housing will increase demand for water to ensure that there's adequate water supply to serve the community. And so that'll be a focus as well. Similarly, with with wastewater, wastewater and wildfire, since almost all of the town is classified as a high wildfire risk hazard severity zone, it'll require a close focus in the EIR. These are the are the topics that we've initially identified as as necessary of of careful focus, but we definitely want to hear from members of the public about other potential issues and solutions that could address them. And so in maybe to guide the discussion here tonight, we've put together a couple of quite specific questions. And so if if you have any particular information that you think would be beneficial to us as the EIR is being prepared, we'd welcome hearing that, whether tonight here in orally or in writing. Are there any specific concerns related to any of those resource areas that that I've mentioned that need careful focus in the EIR? Please, please let us know. And what actions could be taken to address those concerns or mitigate those impacts? I would also say if you have suggestions on alternatives to the to the proposed project, we'd we'd be looking to hear that too, whether that's alternative sites or whether that's different programs and policies, we'd be interested to hear that. All of this input will be taken on board as we prepare the draft EIR. And again, here's the here's Heather's email address for anyone who would like to submit a comment in writing. All comments are due by five PM, May second. That's the close of the thirty day scoping period. And so we can open it up for any scoping comments.
Okay, great. Any questions from my colleagues at this time? We still have Councilmember Blash with us? Ah, okay. Any questions, Councilmember Blash, before we open public comment on this? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we will open public comments on the programmatic EIR comments and environmental impacts. Frank.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Frank Agarmettaway, and I'm speaking this evening for Say Fairfax. I've been on the road for two hours to try to get here. Diet and Batia was the wrong consulting firm for Fairfax to hire. Good for a big city, but not a small town with one way in and one way out roads. Diet and Batia and Batia are the center of a major citizens lawsuit in Sonoma County over their plan to redevelop the Sonoma Development Center and the environmental impact report they prepared for that project. Programmatic EIRs are used to gloss over adverse environmental impacts. What Diet and Batia has prepared for Fairfax will be a real nightmare for our town if approved by the Town Council. The draft housing and safety element setting density on a number of fit sensitive vacant parcels in town, both private and public open space parcels, including vacant parcels but previously determined to be unbuildable for various reasons, including legally merged lots. But previously determined to be unbuildable for various reasons, including legally merged lots. Our ridgeline scenic quarters will be lined with housing in violation of Fairfax's open space element that must be addressed. In any draft E I R. They are proposing a five to seven story high rise with one hundred and seventy five units on one point nine acres at School Street Plaza. A small business incubator incubator site. They're proposing high density development on commercially zoned properties developed with the last of the remaining historical structures in Fairfax. A couple of them date back to the late nineteen eighteen hundreds. Diet and Bacha has designated the ten acre open space parcel. For six units on the ridge top that we had set aside as open space for the fifty two unit metal and subdivision. We approved the sub the subdivision nineteen sixty six in a planned development district P D D zone. When we annexed the already started but uncompleted subdivision. The ten acre open space parcel was landlocked. And and the and the and the but the ten acre open space parcel was sold about four years ago. And the new owner was trying to get an easement for vehicle access to the ten acre. Landlocked property from the Marin County Open Space District through unincorporated Fairfax. Supervisor Katie Rice would know the details of that proposed access. The ten acre ridge top parcel separates Metal Land and Cannon Village, including the Cannon Tennis and Swim Club. Fairfax has two ordinances on the books that I authored. One says a Fairfax development must be accessed through a Fairfax roadway. A developer cannot access their property for development in Fairfax through another jurisdiction like either Marin County or San Antonio. The purpose there is twofold, to give direct access to for emergency response from Fairfax Police and not require Fairfax P D to travel through another jurisdiction to get a Fairfax property. Get to a Fairfax property for emergencies and for an emergency and for common sense planning approach to development in Fairfax. Is another jurisdiction going to maintain an access road or Fairfax subdivision? The other ordinance says any housing development in Fairfax must have frontage on a public street, not a paper street. New roads must have twenty foot pavement. The ten acre parcel has no direct access and no Fairfax street frontage. It separates Metal End from Cannon Village and Cannon and Cannon Tennis Club. There are three landlocked parcels close to our east hub where we border with San Antonio, none of which have improved and accessible Fairfax street frontage. And Diet and Bacha has designated those three parcels for ten units. All three parcels can be accessed only through San Antonio, a ten minute drive out of Fairfax. One parcel was owned by Jamie Williams, a former San Francisco forty iron football player. It overlooks Sky Ranch, which which you fortunately helped purchase some years ago. And that application to develop the seven seven acre property from an easement San Antonio was rejected by the Fairfax Town Council in two thousand and one. Now Diet and Bacha is recommending four units above Sky Ranch on that landlocked parcel. The other two parcels on top of the ridge line above Sky Ranch are recommended for six units. Another parcel is a large parcel that was dedicated open space through a Marin County Superior Court mandatory settlement. When the owner of the Fairfax Hill subdivision sued us in the nineteen eighties over our restrictions on the on the project. The the proposal designates that dedicated open space for ten units. They have given the the undeveloped open space parcel a six fifteen Oak Manor Drive address. Another two parcels we purchased for open space in early nineteen seventies were on Forest Avenue above the Marin Town and Country Club. We purchased those parcels for pedestrian access to Marin Town and Country Club should either a resort in or private or public recreation area be restored on the property. The proposal is to put six units on those two lots on Forest Avenue.
Frank, I just want to let you know you're approaching five and a half minutes. So if you could just wrap up your comments, that would be appreciated.
Let me try to wrap it up quick. You know, I spent eight hours going to the assessor's office on every pro on every parcel that's listed in this.
It might be better to submit those comments in writing than reading them into the record too, just because it's hard even to keep notes on.
Okay, I'll get all these comments. I will get them all to you. I just wanted, you know, I drove two hours to get here.
Thank you for coming.
Say Fairfax, I just a few more coming, the hundred acre wall property that a developer wanted to subdivide into ten estate lots with A D U's. It's included in the map in Wildland Urban Interface Zone. It was prepared by W M R T. As part of Fairfax's nineteen seventy four open space element and general plan update. It seems that map, which was at Town Hall safe when I left the town council in two thousand and five, has has conveniently disappeared. Not only is the wall property in the high landslide area, Fairfax was actually sued. We were sued by a property owner in San Gabriel Court. When a landslide that originated on a wall property blew through the blew through their home. The proposed development is on the ridge line scenic corner and a proposed development is called Miranda Heights. Two hundred and fifty trees would have to be cut down. And four years ago, the then town council said that your town council said an E R was necessary. For sequel compliance, but the developer refused to pay for the I R. So no E R was ever done. And now and now this this proposal wants to designate a ten lot estate subdivision with ten acres for each lot. And under a new the new state law, each home can have both an A D U and and J A D U. One of the once approved two ninety open space parcels that were offered to the town by Resources for Community Development, the developer, the developer Victory Village. That subsequently fell through has been given a density of six units. Fairfax has had a ban on new on new septic tanks for sewer disposal since nineteen seventy four. Fairfax approved the ordinance because septic tanks were leaching in our creeks were listed salmon species spawn. That original ordinance has never been rescinded. That is the reason Canyon Road residents tax themselves to hook up to the Rossby sanitary district sewer system. Fairfax's twenty twenty three, twenty thirty one arena numbers are four ninety, but the recommendation is for five hundred eighty units. A twenty percent increase over reading the number requirements. Fairfax will lose the small town character and livability if if this all goes through and the E R does not properly address it. The draft of a programmatic E R must also address those issues that I've mentioned this evening. Thank you very much for this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Thanks for making the drive. Next speaker, please.
Everybody wants to be last. There's a really good reason. Why these numbers are absurd. It's called death. No civilized government, country, county, state, local. Has the authority anywhere. To put a death penalty on its citizens. And that's what adding this number. Of units to Fairfax is. There's no infrastructure to support it. There's no infrastructure in case of a fire to get out of town. It's nice. We have these little, you know, wildfire signs up everywhere, but it doesn't really affect the reality of. Can't get out of town if there's an emergency. As far as the ridge lines. Spotted owls have been sighted on the hills. Is that going to be part of your E I R? Are you going to be looking at yellow legged frogs who are not quite endangered, but pretty close? And when you talk about energy. Because of the building codes, the new building codes passed by this town and council, you're looking at electrification. I don't know. This is so that P G and E and so so Colletison can have natural gas to. Fund their new plants that they're building to generate electricity with it as opposed to having residents have it. So what you have with the rush to electrification is you may you're going to see more coal being burned. That's a fact. May not happen here. But it's going to be happening in four corners and other places. And also when people are reduced to a mono source for power or for energy. We're going to be looking at people buying more gas generators, more gas barbecues, et cetera. Because when the power goes out here, because the grid can't handle what we already have. What is that going to do to the air quality, let alone the cars and the increased pollution from building, et cetera? So you want to know about actions to take. The risks that are here are not going to be mitigated unless you put asphalt everywhere. You cut down all the trees, you take out all the grass, you take out everything. And so the only rational thing is to go back to whoever comes up with these arena numbers. And tell them that what they're talking about is a death sentence for the residents of Fairfax. And they need to reduce the number to something more logical, like, I don't know, hundred fifty, maybe?
Thank you, Mark. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. One more time. Hello, everybody. So also, it's really surprising. I want to speak to the same thing that Mark just spoke to. That our population's actually in the state declining. Did anyone get that memo? Anyone else? Town Council, Diet and Bacha. People are leaving California. And the sentiment around town is that people want to leave Fairfax because it's a hostile environment. Because you can't build here because building's been disincentivized. So maybe you should consider. What the census says and what the actual demographics are here in Fairfax. I understand there's. Racial equity, social justice considerations that are ideal mandates. But if you don't have the data, if you don't use the data. It's garbage in, garbage out. Completely inaccurate. Cost insensitive results. That are not good for Fairfax. Other things, again, Brown Act violations. There is not a packet. See this packet right here, everybody? This is partial printout. My printer was still running. I printed for an hour at my cost. Before I came here. That's the packet, the information packet about what we're supposed to be talking about tonight that is not present out front. People, the public. Especially those who are low income. Have been denied the right to review what's being discussed tonight. This is wrong. By the way, regarding natural gas. And adding more population here and coal burning. The Ninth District Court just overturned Berkeley's first in the nation natural gas ban. So I wonder what the town spent. On all that fooey. That has handicapped the resiliency of our town. By saying that for now and by possibly having to go to court like Berkeley's had to and lost. Why are we? Taking policies up that cause more nuclear power and more coal burning? All of this needs to be thought through on a cost benefits basis. We need accurate data that reflects Fairfax. I'm sure you're capable of doing a very good job, and I'm sure that's why you were hired. So I hope you can for Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. Next speaker, please.
Jack Judkins, I'm, as I said, the vice chair of the Open Space Committee, and I'm also just going to bundle together my own thoughts. So. Protecting the the community, the nature of the Fairfax community means in large part protecting everything, everything that we hold near and dear. And one of those things is the fact that this is a a town that has worked very hard to preserve its open space areas and.
Do you move the mic closer? Sorry.
Yes, we've worked very hard to preserve our open space areas and and not only just for recreation, but for. The biological resources that exist on them as wildlife corridors, as habitat. For the visual importance of the open space to the character of the town. These are these are philosophies that are embedded in all of our policies under the general plan and other other. Town adopted documents that come into conflict with a lot of the proposed development. I'm also personally concerned about additional transportation without adding public transportation. I mean. It's one thing to say we're going to use buses, but if there aren't buses or adequate buses, how are we going to do that? There obviously will be an impact on public services on on the open space lands or also will be impacts on hydrology. The more open space lands we retain, the better the watersheds perform, the less impact on our on our water quality. Those are those are broad categories of thoughts, and at this point, I'm too tired to. Get into further depth. I mean, I don't suppose I can incorporate my earlier comments, but to the extent that. You listen to both sets of them, and I'm talking to the consultant and to the town council. Please, please take those into account.
Thank you, Jack.
Michael McIntosh. First, for the prior, when I sat down and didn't finish on the housing opportunity sites. The current list recycles twenty nine sites from the prior cycle of those twenty nine sites that were not bid or X me built. That provides a by right build. So that's one thing that should be reviewed and any and all numbers are allocated to the. Fourth cycle that were brought forth or excuse me, fifth, they need to be deducted from the current count number. Because it would not actually reflect the number that you're presenting. Such as even School Street has a smaller number. The thing I wanted to speak on the N O P, if you guys will take the time, and I know I sent this to the council members. If you looked at it, I sent the prior N O P in in November. A response to that that included twenty seven attachments. I took the time to pull up every single property and provide you the utility overlay. The collective slope, the zoning for flood, fire, all kinds of things that would mitigate the use of those properties or their ability to be included. I also requested that they be addressed on a feasibility study because most of them, if you look at a feasibility impact to this data, excuse me, to the town of Fairfax, they will fail. Additionally, I provided a sequo provision that states that for the furtherance of housing. If a project is built, that the developer is entitled to reach back to the town and be reimbursed. Which means that if we build something on a huge hillside and there are no supportive utilities such as road or sewer water. Then the town will be burdening the citizens of this town with future bonds to do that work. Specifically looking at the cost of these projects, if you put these projects all over the town. Have you explained to the town the cost? First off, the roads will need to be improved. At best, that's a ten million dollar bond. Then you'll have to increase the water capacity, electricity capacity. That'll be at least a ten million dollar bond plus financing. But the big one. Where you put in all this housing will require increased sewage capacity. The sewer lines also flow downhill, which means that at best you'll be a fifteen million dollar bond coupled with. Taking land through eminent domain or different easements that that sewage can flow downhill. So I think the lack of any feasibility study per parcel within the N O P. Especially when it's pointed out, you know, twice in writing and verbally is more than misfeasance. So I encourage the town, every single parcel that you look at and every single parcel you include. That there's a feasibility study to actually see if it's going to be built. In the past, this town has cited different properties, knowing that'd be so expensive, it'd never be built. I think that the town is trying to do some of this right now in addition. So again, if you want the H C D to include all these properties, you need to make something practical. Specifically to the properties down to France Strike Boulevard, H C D told us. That they thought it was not reasonable to assume that all the property or stakeholders would collectively take down their buildings so that they could build this additional density. And again, I'll repeat, the H C D specifically told us that they were more than surprised that my property was not included. In the housing element site opportunity list. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next speaker.
I went first last time, sorry. Last in the room this time. This is just referring to the the sequel, just more of a request for the upcoming meeting when the public comments and maybe associated. Presentation at that point from Diet and Bacha. I'm just hoping, nothing in the presentation thus far was mentioning the vehicle miles traveled. New statutes and calculations, which are super complicated. Sometimes there's even specialists. That are doing these calculations, but in the way that it would benefit Fairfax. that are doing these calculations, but in the way that it would benefit Fairfax compared to the other cities as they get further or closer to the city areas, the major metropolitan areas. And and then also, perhaps if it's possible, when you say you're taking a program, programmatic approach to the SEQA, can it also include all sites within the town, not only the sites that are on the sites list, but they'll cover, for example, of course, the Marin Town and Country Club, something that could be, you know, precursor to future development there. So just, I'm not sure if the town council even has an understanding of what V M T is with the number of changes in the department locally here. The county and San Anselmo both had large meetings on those new requirements and how they benefit the small towns that we live in. So I just appreciate that if it could come up. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin.
Good evening, council. Thanks again. The first thing I want to bring up about the E I R issues, which may not have been, maybe someone talked about it, was the capability of the Ross Valley Fire Department in dealing with structures that are above three stories tall. We don't have a hook and ladder, which means that some of the responses that I've heard through A Bag and H C D is just have, you can't do with two stories, do it with three, can't do it with three, do it with four. We've got many bonuses which will build up, but if we don't have the capability of dealing with a housing fire that's over three stories tall, like San Rafael can, what do we do about that? Another thing that was brought up in some of the meetings I've attended was the solution for transportation. Right now, we've had a reduction in transportation down Sir Francis Drake. Our bus lines are, I calculated this for the previous planning manager, and it's right about at the frequency during peak hours where they may be able to get a bonus through some of the state bills that allow bonuses. One way to prevent additional construction is to write the M T A and say, make your headway 20 minutes and not 15 minutes. Well, that works the other way around. Okay, if our headway is right now 20 minutes and we need to build higher buildings, well, how difficult is it for somehow a grant or or developer to finance more frequent bus service or even have a private bus line? Because right now, I used to commute to San Francisco on the 24 bus. Well, the 24 bus doesn't exist anymore. And now San Anselmo has a 22 bus. If there was just a shuttle bus connecting Fairfax with the with the San Anselmo hub, now that commute becomes much more feasible than going through the transit center in San Rafael, which makes commuting to San Francisco, when we do commute to San Francisco, again, very, very difficult. And and this issue where it's simply a matter of bus headway, which can be privatized, that is a consideration to include when you're dealing with whether or not we can deal with additional density. Our power grid is is clearly in need of correction. We need to decentralize it. We need to improve it. We need to distribute our power loads across 24 hours, not just peak loads. So if there, there was a capability of 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 our town codes and in order require onsite battery storage in order to lessen peak loads, we could then fit more housing with fewer distribution lines. These are just all things which may not have been thought of, but I'm going to close the box. Thank.
Thank you, Rick. Next speaker, please. Could you please turn your mic on, Scott? Thanks.
Didn't realize it was turned off. Thank you. I just have a couple of, Scott Hawkstrasser, 141 Bellinas Road. I have a couple of comments about the the E I R and a program E I R. It doesn't look at the level of detail that we do on a project specific E I R. And I don't expect that it will. But I think what you've heard so far in comments is that there's going to be a number of significant adverse impacts that can't be mitigated. And my question, one, for example, will be the policy consistency analysis. I don't think you can find that this housing element is consistent with the policies and the policies in the general plan, particularly the landies and the open space and maybe also for fire protection. If you don't have a hook and ladder, you maybe you can't build a four-story building with 170 units. So you need to look at alternative sites to kind of lower the density and spread it, I think, a little further. And I'm hoping that the analysis will do that. The last thing I wanted to ask is, is there funds in the budget for this program E I R to do what's called a statement of overriding considerations? Because there is no question that the environmental review process allows for projects that have impacts that are significant and adverse and can't be mitigated. But the only way that can be done is once there's a statement of overriding consideration whereby you you make a point, for example, very simply, that affordable housing is needed greater than the impact of those environmental significant adverse impacts of that. And the the question is an important one because I've worked on several E I Rs over the years and writing a statement of overriding overriding considerations is quite a legal process. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Next speaker, please. Last call for anybody in the room. Otherwise, folks on Zoom, if you can raise your hands. Okay, we'll go to Zoom.
Okay, I see one raised hand on Zoom. That is Claire Armitage, and you are unmuted now, Claire.
Good evening, Town Council Mayor Cutrone. My major concerns here are evacuation during a fire, and I think that I speak for almost everyone who lives in Fairfax. I recently heard that in the event of a fire, the fire department told some people who lived up in the hills that they were estimating it would take six hours to get into San Rafael from Fairfax during an evacuation. Also, the fire department said they will not be fighting fires in the hills and neighborhoods, but they will be defending the Sir Francis Drake Corridor and are urging everyone to evacuate to that corridor. I think all of us have tried to get in or out of Fairfax when the schools are letting out. I can't even imagine what it would be like having every artery that exists in town feeding into Sir Francis Drake and what the prospect is for a safe evacuation. And that's now, that's before you add any other houses or apartment buildings or any new construction whatsoever. The second concern is water. Unless additional provisions are made for water, we will always be living on the edge, not knowing from winter to winter if we, if we'll have the amount of water that we need. Development on this scale, and I think other people are saying this too, necessitates major infrastructure upgrades to water, sewer, the electric grid in a county and overall environment that rarely expresses the stomach for such major projects. They're always very controversial, such as building a desalinization plant or trying to improve the power grid. There are many new and green building innovations that can certainly aid in water and power conservation, but many of these are very costly and add to already prohibitive building costs. I don't, I don't see. I mean, I've tried to look at, looking at this every which way from Sunday, but I see nothing but opposing interests and potential conflicts. I do not envy you in trying to meet these requirements, but as a longtime resident of Fairfax, I ask that you take all our concerns into consideration and do what is best for our town and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire.
I do not see any other raised hands. If anyone does want to raise their hand to comment on Zoom, this is the time.
Okay, seeing none, we will close public comment on that. And oh, do you want to please come up to the podium?
Deb London. Fairfax, I just think that it is critical to go up against the state of California, and you've got to negotiate these numbers down, 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 way down. Otherwise, it's never going to happen. It's just going to be a shit show. So I really encourage you to like stand up to them and negotiate. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. Okay, now we'll close public comment for reels. Andrew, do you have anything else you want to add?
Not at this time, but these, these comments have been helpful.
Okay, great. And anyone on council have any comments or anything at this time? Council member Blash?
Yeah, I just am wondering if you could clarify what's going on with the Marin Town and Country Club and its status vis a vis the housing element? And maybe a little bit about Bob Schwartz's property, or is this not the time to do that?
Sure. Sure, I'm happy to provide the context that I'm aware of. I obviously, my firm became involved in the project only late last fall, so I can't really speak to what might have happened earlier in the process. But as I mentioned earlier in the, in the evening, in December, early on, we did have a meeting with H C D staff, and at that time, we asked them about the possibilities for the M T C site. And what they said was, and I believe David Waltering may have reported out on this before, so apologies if I'm retreading ground, but what H C D said is it's, it's, I, let me start by saying, I showed a map of sites that are available for housing. And currently, the Marin Town and Country, Country, Country Club site does not have zoning that permits housing, and therefore, it's technically at this moment not available for housing. So what we discussed with H C D was, you know, what it would take to rezone the property, including a ballot initiative. And what they said was, well, it's not impossible to include it on the site's inventory. However, Fairfax would need to, it would be a last resort, and Fairfax would need to be able to have an inventory that demonstrates sufficient capacity to meet Rena with buffer without the Marin Town and Country Club site on it. And only if that was the case, could you also add Marin and Town and Country Club on top? Because there's no certainty that it could be developed with housing within the eight-year period. So that wasn't a hard no, but it also wasn't, they didn't feel confident that it could be counted towards, towards the six-cycle arena allocation. So that's with respect to the Marin Town and Country Club site. And then with respect to Mr. Schwartz's property, just to clear, clear the record perhaps, because some commentators were suggesting that the site had been left off the inventory, but that is not in fact, true. The site is on the inventory. It is, it is one of the larger sites that currently has zoning that allows for single-family housing. And it would potentially receive the clustered hillside residential development standards to permit clustered housing on relatively flatter portions of the site, while also protecting large areas of open space and and the ridge lines. And on the basis of the site, the the site and the application of that of that program related to clustered hillside residential development, we're projecting a realistic capacity for 10 units on the site. I think it's important to note that that projection of capacity in no way limits what would be allowed under, under current zoning, under, under base zoning. It, it's, it's simply a, a projection of based on what we know at this time and and a variety of different factors, including environmental constraints and market constraints and past performance of 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 other sites in Fairfax that are, that are in the same zoning district. That's what, what we're able to project according to the guidelines that H C D has put forward. However, that doesn't preclude the, the property owner from putting, putting in an application to subdivide his property or to rezone portions of his property to allow for higher density housing. None of that's precluded. It's just that at this point, there is no application to do that, and to assume it would be, would be speculative and wouldn't likely pass muster with H C D. So that's, that's the reason that those proposals haven't been put forward.
Yes, that's very helpful. Just a procedural question. Are we making comments now about both the housing element and the N O P or just the N O P?
Just the N O P.
Thank you. Then I think that is all of my comments. Thank you.
Great. And just to confirm, so we have public comment on the admin draft. And that is to be sent to housing@townoffairfax.org, and that comment period ends April 30. Then consultants will be taking all those and providing responses that will be made public for, I guess, the May 3 council meeting, which is when we can add additional comments and stuff like that from the council. And then separately, you have the E I R comment period, which closes May 2. Is that right? And those comments go to Heather at H Abrams at townoffairfax.org. Okay, great. Just wanted to confirm that because there's a lot going on. So.
So just to clarify, the comments on, on the E I R, it's the scoping for the E I R, correct?
Right. There's no draft yet. Thank you. Yeah. It'll inform the draft, which will then come out, and then there'll be a 45-day comment period on the draft. Awesome. Okay. Anything more that we need to accomplish tonight, or if we think we're pretty much good, right? Okay. Thank you for your time, Andrew, and for all the work that Diet and Batia has done to get up to speed and churn out a lot of work. So thank you. And thanks to everybody who came out and everybody who joined us on Zoom, and we will see you on May 3 for more discussion on the housing element. That concludes this meeting. Good evening.